All right. So the Town of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission has called to order, do a roll call. C L. Um, Kevin?
Here.
And I guess Jim, would you like to be seated for Mike?
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. So I guess move down here. Um, but next thing is approval of minutes of the previous meeting. And. Okay, so I moved to approve the minutes of the Plan Zoning Commission's special meeting minutes of September twenty third, twenty twenty five.
So it's like, all right.
Oh, it's moving.
Yeah. Well. Um, we'll just get a second on it. Okay. So I just like take a short break and um.
Nope, you can continue with this.
I can do that.
You can, and then.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
All right, that's fine. So um, does anybody have any corrections, edits, anything on these? I had a couple, couple items on page four. Um. Let's see. Sorry, that's okay. Six paragraphs down where it says the Commissioner asked. Um, it said new at the end, a new regional housing study is currently in progress. I just wonder if there's an ETA for that.
Hold on, okay.
Or if they said that at the meeting, because it'd be nice to know, looking at there.
Uh, no, that was actually presented um in a meeting in um October. So yeah, it is available. It is up on the on on um Greater Groton under the Missing Middle Project.
Oh, okay, so we'll leave it as is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. And in the last, well, next to last paragraph where it says he explained, there's a typo on the second line. It should be electric spoke, I think worker demand.
Yes.
And then on the next page, there's another typo in the second paragraph. That's a deficit at the end of the sentence.
Oh, yep.
And that's all. So anything else? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Abstain? Okay, passes unanimously.
Okay, so now just administrative stuff. So now Michael is here, so he is seated. We can move on to the next one, but Lauren is not.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
Steve's not.
Yeah. Stand in for Steve.
There we go.
Of course.
Perfect.
You can do that until we run out of.
We understand Steve's not coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, you say, that's right, secure. Okay.
Okay, um.
Okay, so next I think.
We'll promote him.
Okay.
Yeah, he says he's in prison. Okay.
Okay.
Can't even, thank you. Okay, next is Public Communications. See, anybody from the public here want to say anything? Okay, um, I guess special permits subdivisions, we can move past that to the site plan. Okay, so uh, site plan, uh, S I D twenty five day zero zero two nine for Mystic Business Two Extension, seven hundred Flanders Road. And um, yeah, yes, it's just, yeah, if you just give your name and address when you get to that.
So my name is Tim.
Do you mind using the mic? Because I guess otherwise it's not going to record it very well.
Yeah, I can just use it.
Yeah. It does come out.
Hear me now.
Yeah. Monitors.
So my name is Tim Talaska. I'm the owner of Mystic Business Park. I'm also a licensed professional engineer, but I contracted Greg Fettis to help me because I can't do everything. Now I'm trying to do. I, Greg unfortunately had a uh meeting in Plainfield at seven thirty. He was going to try to log in remotely. However, I just don't, I don't know. Uh, but I can present to you a new thing.
Sure.
Uh, we need to know here.
Can you turn the plan so that it faces the commission?
Yeah.
And that way it'll be the right side up. There we go.
Box here, I think we're flag. So uh.
Shift a little bit.
Yeah, shift it a little bit.
Towards you.
Yep.
There we go.
Perfect. All right.
Yep. Yeah, maybe over towards your notes a little bit, and then we'll zoom in and.
There we go.
All right.
Is that good for you?
Until we have seven more orders for you, yes.
And there's Greg Fettis.
Oh, he is here.
He is, just.
I want to promote him.
No, he's there. There he is. Okay.
There you are, Greg.
Oh, hey, sorry. Trouble connecting. Are you ready for me?
Yes, you're right in time.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm having trouble hearing everyone else, but I'll uh, as long as you can hear me, I'll go through the project. And then if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them. So uh, just to introduce myself, Greg Fettis, Fettis Engineering. At an office at seventy Essex Street in Mystic, Connecticut, uh, representing uh, the owner, Tim Talaska, who's there uh, at the meeting. Uh, looking to build four buildings at an existing light industrial uh, flex building site. Um, where's kind of has a track record at eight hundred Flanders and then continued that on to seven hundred Flanders. And has room for expansion and uh, looking to do four more buildings as part of this uh, project. Um. To continuation of the previous uh, you can see uh, the sheet in front of you is the cover sheet, which basically shows an overview of the entire site.
We minimize him.
Yeah, I'll minimize him soon.
On Greg, we're just gonna do a little.
Yep.
Yep. Hey Greg, if you want me to flip the pages, uh, no, we want to, no, we want to do this.
Yeah, you want to.
In us, yeah.
Yeah, I think you can flip the pages.
That's better.
Okay.
Oh, am I minimized or maximized or something?
No, you're minimized now, so now we can see the plan. So just tell us when you want to flip.
Okay, I can hear you much better now too. Um, so yeah, the, that's the kind of an overview of the of the project. Um. Basically a continuation of what's already there. Uh. And if you can flip to the second sheet, we'll probably flip through pretty quickly here in the beginning. Um, the second sheet is just the existing conditions plan, uh, which shows uh, Whittle's Farm to the. Uh, I guess it would be to the east and then No Ankle Ledger Road to the north. Um, Flanders Road to the west and then ninety five to the south. Uh, there's a wetland located off of Flanders Road that basically stretches most mostly across the frontage there. Um. And you can uh, there's a portion of the exist existing sidewalk on Flanders Road that will uh, show being continued to the boundary line on Flanders. But you can go ahead and flip to sheet three. So this is the demolition plan, or not a lot of demolitions since basically where we're looking to do work is in the open area, but there's a few piles of debris. Uh, there's a portion of a stone wall that will be repurposed on site. Um, couple of containers that'll be relocated, uh, but other than that, that's pretty much, pretty much it for um, the demolition plan. If you want to flip to the site plan, sheet four. Uh, so this is an overview, uh, what we're proposing, which is uh, four buildings. Um. Located uh, kind of as you move towards the north uh, from the existing site. Um, we're planning on building uh, the first building there. Um. And we have, we show a staging area just to the west. Uh, and we'll stage um, kind of everything, kind of away away from the active areas of the site. Uh. We're also proposing to add some additional containers down on uh, closer to uh, ninety five, where there's there's some existing containers. Um. And we're also proposing to add a interconnection to Medtronic, which is the neighbor to the north. Uh, was passed by the uh, Fire Marshal uh, that we provide access. That way, if there's whatever reason, either one of our uh, access points to the site is cut off, we can, the Fire Department emergency vehicles can get through um, to each site. Um. And actually, it's cleared all the way out to uh, No Ankle Ledger Road, but we're not proposing uh, kind of that formal connection at this point. Um. So we do meet all the, there's a zoning table at the bottom of the sheet. Um. Which uh, shows that we meet all the uh, requirements of the zone. You can flip to sheet five, which is just a close up uh, view of uh, let's say forty scale drawing of the the same plan, uh, which shows a blow up of the four, uh, the four buildings we're proposing. So we would start with building fifteen and kind of work our way around. Um, and they're all interconnected uh, utilities and so forth will come at later sheets. Uh, we do have on this sheet is uh, an excerpt from uh, the typical lease for this area uh, that talks about hazardous waste uh, and basically that it's not allowed uh, on site. Um. And I think we can flip to sheet six, which is the overall grading. Um. And utility plan, so this is going to show uh, septic location, the overall septic, uh, the overall drainage, uh, which is tying into the existing system. You can see in the far right corner or far right side is the existing detention basin. And then on the left corner, which was just pointed to, is the blow up of that detention basin. Uh, that's all existing, so we're basically just tying in uh, to that. Uh, there's a letter uh, in the file uh, from us uh, that basically states that the system's sized accordingly to handle the additional impervious runoff. Um. And flipping to sheet seven shows the sidewalk plan on Flanders Road, which we got approved in a separate application to the Wetlands uh, Commission. And it's about seventeen hundred feet, linear feet of of sidewalk. There's a portion already done uh, close to the entrance. Um, but we would look to extend that to basically to the ninety five um, right away. Uh, and we would look to split that into three, yeah, as we kind of finish the first three buildings, we would do a third, a third and a third, uh, just to spread the cost out a little bit. Um. Uh, so we would ask the commission if that would be, uh, you know, get building fifteen done and we've finished the side, or a third of the sidewalk uh, when we get the uh, C O for that building and then continue on to sixteen and seventeen in a similar fashion. Uh. Sheet eight um, is a forty scale drawing of the drainage system as well as the water lines. Um. Again, just detail of those uh, uh, of those, of both drainage and the uh, and the water lines. Uh, I don't think we need to dwell on that. Um. Sheets uh, nine is the overall septic plan. Um, cross sections, design, uh, similar area to where uh, the previous buildings, septic is, that's where all the testing was done. That's where the long term plan was for the septic. Um. Sheet ten is a blow up forty scale over fifty scale of the septic area and all the test pits that were done uh, and per per tests that were done for those areas. Uh, sheet eleven is um, a close up or fifty scale, forty scale of the buildings that show the septic tanks. Basically each building gets a tank and a pump chamber, and it's pumped down to that septic field that you saw in the previous sheets. Sheet twelve is the Soil and Erosion Control Plan, which basically shows limits of disturbance as well as self fence down gradient. Um, excuse me, self fence down gradient of uh, of all the activities, uh, shows the staging area. It does show an access off of No Ankle Ledger Road for construction, uh, which has a tracking pad. Um. So try to do this construction without disrupting the existing uh, businesses as much as possible. Sheet thirteen is the landscape and lighting plan. Uh, you can see on No Ankle Ledger Road where we have a thirty foot uh, buffer from the residential zone, which is across the street, uh, as well as street trees located um, along there, but leaving the access uh, the kind of a, the temporary access on No Ankle Ledger Road. Um. And then we just tried to follow suit with the rest of the development with um, landscaping on the islands at the end of the buildings, uh, and potted plants on the fronts of the buildings. Um. And then similar lighting that we used on all the other buildings. So it's a very kind of repetitive uh, uh, scenario. Um, we're just trying not to reinvent the wheel here and just, it works. What's what's already out there works and what we're trying to do is replicate that or duplicate that. Um. We did ask for a modification slash waiver on the front, front of the building landscaping, and I'll talk about the waivers um, uh, separately. But that was one of them. Uh, the balance of the sheets are just details. Um. I think uh, there's site details, drainage details, septic details, and then landscape and lighting details. Um, I don't know that we need to look at each one of those, uh, but they're basically all the requirements of uh, that you see on typical plans. Um. So uh, just the the three waivers we're looking for. One is the um, modification for the front landscaping. Um. Which, grab this here. Uh. Yeah, one is the uh, the the front of the building landscaping, which we're doing potted plants. And I think it was, I believe it was approved previously in some of the other, the other buildings. Um, seems to work well uh, and provides some greenery in the in the front of the buildings. We do have uh, access doors, garage doors on most of the buildings, and it would be challenging to do a landscape uh, all the way across the front. Um. The other uh, waiver is the sidewalk along No Ankle Ledger Road, uh, kind of given the the rural, uh, I know it's on the list for sidewalks, um, but given the farm to the to the west and the lack of other sidewalks, we would defer at this point um, that it just wouldn't, it would kind of lead to nowhere and would be inappropriate uh, for the road itself. Um, and we do have additional development down the road that you would kind of get another crack at it, and I believe we also would sign a, an agreement stipulating that we would at the, at the future time, do the sidewalks. Um. And trying to think of a third waiver, and it's not coming to me, but uh.
Third, third. Who has the internal sidewalks?
Oh, the internal sidewalks, yes. So uh, I believe last time, uh, the the sites aren't really set up for movement within the the site. Uh, someone rents a unit and they pretty much go to that unit and they use the unit and they leave the unit. There's not a lot of internal movement pedestrian wise. Um, so we feel like uh, it's not really appropriate for this kind of kind of development. Um, and we would ask uh, respectfully to to for that waiver also. Uh, I think that that was it. We addressed, I think, of the majority of uh, Mr. Prescott's uh, comments. Um. Tried to address the, the other, the other staff, uh, Public Works and um, Fire Marshal, I I believe we have addressed everything. Uh, if there's anything additional, I think there's a technical items that uh, we're, we're in agreement too. So um, if there's any questions, we happy to answer them.
Great, thank you, because at this point we'll ask staff to uh, thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience with my.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Like to present the staff.
Of course, thank you. Um, yeah, I want to expand upon a, do you want to, oh yeah, we'll switch that. Do you want to, why don't we keep the plan up there, just in case they have comments for you guys after? All right, so um, I want to reiterate a couple things and and um, that were in the staff summary, but also a few things that weren't mentioned. So this stat, this site is located within the I M, which is the industrial mix, uh, multi-use. Um, flex space is a permitted use within the I M. Um, as was mentioned before, this project involves um, the next part of development for um, this, for this Mystic Business Park Two. Um, four new single story buildings. Um, they're going to host office, retail warehouse and storage space. And as was mentioned too, in the southeastern corner of the property, um, they've been very successful with shipping, storage containers, and they need the extra space there, so they're expanding that area too as well. Um, you can see it on this one here, there are wetlands in um, basically the southwest corner. Um, so a wetland permit was was approved by the inland wetland agency back in June, specifically for um, the sidewalk extension. That's the only part of this project that will, is within the upland review for wetlands. Um, all other proposed work that was talked about tonight is outside the wetland, the upland review area. Um, we'll talk a little bit about, and sorry, it was, it, we don't do waivers anymore, it's more modifications. So we'll kind of talk about that and some of the options as well. Um, so, but before we get to that, I want to talk a little bit about parking. So the parking for um, uh, for this part of the of the of the expansion here, um, they're proposing sixty six spaces. Um, because they're disturbing less than fifty percent, I think it's around sixteen percent of the site, they're not required to put in E V parking spaces. However, um, the applicant feels as though that would be a great addition to the industrial park there. So um, he is actually proposing to add three E V spots um, um, two basic normal E V parking spaces and then one um, handicapped accessible E V spot. So um, uh, let's see here, we had mentioned a little bit about the, the applicant has been working with the Fire Marshal specifically on a connection um, between Medtronic, which is at nine fifty uh, Flanders, um, to provide an emergency access connector between the two properties. There is already a pre-existing um, fire access connector from the existing buildings all the way out to No Ankle Ledger. It's a, it's basically a, um, it's a, is it gravel?
It is a uh.
Gravel slash dirt?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. And so it's specifically for fire access, it's not for for any other access besides that, so. Um, in terms of sidewalks, because that was a big piece of this here, so the the twenty twenty five, the complete streets, bike and and pedestrian master plan does recommend sidewalks along No Ankle Ledger Road. Um, and the applicant is asking for, to postpone the sidewalk um, um, requirement, and that's one of the three options under 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 frontage sidewalks, until the additional area um, to the north is is redeveloped. Because there's no access, there's no formal access from the property out there except for fire access. Um, they felt as though it didn't make any sense to put a sidewalk in quite yet. Um, um, let's see here. Uh, in terms of the internal sidewalk, which was mentioned at the end too, um, the requirement for internal sidewalks does not meet the circumstances as part of, in section eight point three dash four. And and really the type of businesses that are within the business park right now result in very limited pedestrian uh, movement within that, within the development. Um, we talked a little bit about stormwater. Um, there is a uh, a a large um, stormwater treatment system on site there. Um, that was built to help protect the wetlands by controlling and treating so uh, stormwater runoff on the site. Um, the engineer has concluded that this existing stormwater system will adequately handle the additional water quality volume from this expansion. Um, one part that was not mentioned, so this is um, this is Talaska here has his own public water supply specifically for um, this business park here. And um, so as part of of this approval, that we need to confirm confirmation from the state that there was enough capacity for that. So based upon the significant testing he's done as part of that water supply and response that we have specifically from the state, um, the state has confirmed that the existing public water system on site has adequate water to supply um, the added, the additional buildings there. And as was mentioned, um, there is a expansion, obviously because of the new buildings, there will be a slight expansion of the septic system, um, so they have some new um, uh, leaching galleries that are added there. Couple more things, um, um, as was mentioned on the northern section of the property, um, there is a requirement um, to uh, basically have a thirty foot wide um, evergreen buffer um, in between an industrial district or industrial use abutting at residential. So that has, is what is proposed there along with street trees. Um, that is one of the options that that's allowed. I mean, ultimately, the 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 commission has the ultimate determination that it makes sure that that option is sufficient. Um, and and the last part of the landscaping islands, um, because of the nature of the business in there, a lot of trucks, um, garage doors and whatnot. Um, landscape islands are not feasible due to to to, to really the space restrictions and um, and like I said, the nature of the business is there. So the applicant is proposing to duplicate what was been approved as part of the twenty thirteen site plan, um, which includes the landscape islands on the sides of the building. Um, but then also parking spaces between, with um, but, sorry, sorry, parking. Planters behind the parking spaces, um, uh, which which basically buffer a six foot wide walkway in front of all the buildings. So there is still access, kind of takes care of that. So there is still access, kind of takes care of that kind of internal sidewalk piece as well and provides the additional um, uh, landscape thing that is required. Uh, I think that's about it. I just wanted to elaborate on, other than that, I think uh, the summary report has some additional information on that. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have anything for staff. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I guess Hal or anyone wants to start off by asking any questions? The applicant or town staff?
So just make sure that the the fire road that's kind of there was gated on both ends right now.
There's a gate on both ends, yeah, there's a. You know, the fire marshal wanted a a key or a lock or something on there, so it's not open to the general public, but that's that's already placed.
Okay, that that's just going to stay, I mean, usually they're spread through it, so. It's not going to be, nobody's going to have a second thought about using it for construction, it's just strictly for their fire department.
Is for the fire department, I think Greg showed a uh, uh, access for any construction vehicles in the. In the future. In uh, what pad there to get in, uh, the original plan was to have the access uh. Through the existing. Uh, Ave Road. Go up here, that's most likely where they'll come in to start with, but you know, if there was any need to go through there, that is an option also. But usually, you know, I'm I'm the contractor on most of it. I have my own equipment and. It's just kind of there.
Understand, I'm I'm not for that option, just as it turns out, because going Flanders Road, that's a what, ninety-foot wide. It's maybe twenty-four, five feet curb to curb on on Leger. A whole different story, so.
Yeah.
Construction, no, I'd say that, I think it's.
And I could put that as a tech item, we'll we'll take that, we'll take that off of there, so.
Yeah, that's fine. That would be my. Thousand feet on there.
Yeah. Considering what else goes on there. The little planters, you see planters, they're half barrels that.
They are.
Were successful on some places and others and certainly wasn't good in winter. I I don't care one way or the other about them, I think that personally, I think the the planting that you've got on the ends. Is adequate for the kind of thickness it's. Planting barrels, being the letter of the law, sort of. I'm okay with it, but.
I make good first first ups also.
Well, my part. Postponing the sidewalk in Noank Leger until there's future development, I'm good with that. So it makes some sense to me. Same with the internal sidewalks, nature of this, as you say. You drive in, you drive out, you know, where he's going from place to place, it's just not that kind of. I haven't seen anything there, even though there's some potential, maybe somebody there works out of the gym, but they probably drive over to. Kind of like your free gym, but that's what they did, so that's fine. Uh, I will hit on my 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 favorite, which is the lighting, that you included. Your regular pole lamps, which seem fine. Uh, you didn't show the uh, ones attached to the building. Which are not fine, by the way.
There are, there are none on the building that are uh, powered by the park. Each tenant has the ability to. Turn on some lights if they.
It's not whether they turn it on or not, it's the kind of lights.
Okay.
And that's. I I just drove around before I got here.
Yeah.
And exactly three, two or three out of the fifty that you've got. Were actually turned down to remain. Dark sky. The rest are all tilted up thirty degrees, making them glare bombs and doing exactly what we don't want them to be. So frankly, for. Almost all of which you've got, apparently they're on a little hinge because they're they're flipped up.
No one ever uses those over the bay doors. We originally put them there because. We had some requests that people wanted to have more light intensity. I would be happy to never put any more up on there.
That would be good, but it seems like having them, the ones that are down are just fine.
Yeah.
And if someone else uses it, I think maybe that's the two ways that get used, and they probably are, and so if you put any more on, it needs to be fixed in the down position.
I have no problems with that, I've got.
Yep, that's up, uh, yep. Yep, I get that.
That's all I've got.
Great, thanks. Michael, if you want.
Um, what was the, I I'm fine with all the modifications. Uh, the sidewalk that we heard one-third, 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 what is that? So, I mean, that doesn't sound like a problem, but I just.
Right.
There is a long stretch being that I own the frontage, it's not being developed or anything. I did, uh, a sidewalk be. Uh, installed on any of your frontage of the property. It's a long way.
Well, you're just gonna, you're gonna, when you're done, the sidewalk's gonna be done.
It will be.
Then I don't have any problems. That's fine, yeah, that's it.
Okay, great.
Sorry to interrupt, I didn't know.
Yeah. No, it's fine. Um, so actually, that's what I didn't understand, that's why I had him, uh, Tim, I'm really. Interested in that. And um, you know, we run some businesses in similar business parks and there's no need for internal sidewalks, so very much, you know, in favor of that. And I knew Hal would cover the lighting, so I didn't go up before it. But um, it's interesting, so how about on the, not the trailers, the storage units?
Yeah.
Do those have lights on them as well?
There are a a streetlight.
Yeah.
Just a limited, so people don't, uh, you know. Break the leg or anything, but. These units, most of the storage containers are for. My internal tenants that have. Lots of supplies that they don't want to use their valuable heated space. You know, I have contractors, plumbers, things like that, and they'll store all of their equipment or. Eternal in there. So there's no lights on the containers, there's just a a few LEDs to to give enough. Ample lighting to.
Sure.
To see.
And I I just missed it, how many new containers are gonna potentially go in there, Tim?
Uh, this additional row here, I think is about, uh. Uh, I forgot, I guess probably somewhere around fifty more, fifty more boxes.
God bless.
Yeah.
That's all.
Great, thanks, okay, Jim.
Couple of questions, um, the types of businesses in there mostly operate during the day or are there, is there evening traffic going in and out?
I, for the most part, they're all in the day. Some are, I don't even know they're there, there are people that just use it to store things and. You never see them. Um, yeah, for the most part, it's all in the day. Uh, the day, of course, gets shorter at this time of the year, so it's a little bit dark now, but. I have a uh, a camera that measures vehicles that come in and go out. You know, it's my license plate reader is for security, so I I get a a. Good indication of when people come and go and. Now, it's probably about seven thirty in the morning, eight o'clock, they come in and. Maybe three thirty or so, or just when people leave.
Just asking that question around the issue of lighting and, you know, at sidewalk access and movement of people around that area.
Yeah, there is the CrossFit gym, but again. They they practice in the gym, that's.
Whatever they do.
Yeah. Uh, second question, um. Any comments from Ledge Light on the septic plan?
I, we went through this in detail, I've been working there with them for a long time. I. It was almost approved, but the the one person there, she went on maternity leave and I think she was almost done, or maybe was just a little pretty legal, but. There was no issues, everything was uh. Uh, is fine and. Are you still there, Greg?
Still, still there.
He's there.
He's there.
Okay.
He's muted, but.
Muted.
Okay, but anyway, uh. We were hoping to get the the final letter from them uh, by now, but.
So you don't have a B one hundred sign off yet?
I don't believe so, you agree?
No, he's still there.
Yeah.
There he is, he's trying to get, he's off now.
Are we up?
Yep, you're good.
What was about the ledge light in the the final approval with the septic? Um, do you have any more detail on that?
Hey Greg.
Oh, hold on a second. I'm having trouble hearing. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, is it the question about the septic?
Yeah, it's about, have you heard back from Ledge Light?
Yeah, I think we're right at the finish line, except Katie Baldwin, I think, is having her baby, so I think. Things got twisted up a little bit. So, we're right there at the finish line, I just don't think we got anything formal from them yet.
So, in the in the building permit won't be issued until we have sign off from Ledge Light, so that's all part of that too, so.
Right, and we're we're, I think, we're we're comfortable, Tim and I are both comfortable with. Uh. The analysis by Ledge Light to this point, and I think we just gotta switch gears a little bit with somebody else at Ledge Light until. Uh, prior to pulling building permit, obviously, so we're not, we're not concerned about it, but.
Thank you.
Great. Yeah, I I'm pretty familiar with that property, actually, so I think this this makes a lot of sense. And the sidewalk, um, it's interesting on Noank Leger Road. I drive, drove by there today, um, yeah, it's like a farm road, it's narrow and all that sort of thing, but there's not a sidewalk around.
There's, there's one small section right now and and.
It's like an asphalt.
Yeah.
Is that bike eighty-five?
Yeah. No, it's far.
It's further up, it's almost right at the intersection, yeah, yep, yep, so, but that is, um, it it's on, it's completely right on the complete streets. It shows that they want it all the way down there, so.
But it's not till you get really south, I ninety-five, you get to the town, right, property.
Yeah.
And you start to see some sidewalks.
Right, exactly, yeah.
That makes, I am putting in sidewalks there, that'd be a task, that's for sure. Um, then the other side, um, yeah, that makes sense, I mean, it's a nice bikeable road. Um, but no, I think, I have the other questions, it looks like, you know, a good project there, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, so.
So we have draft motions, is, um. Uh, everyone have a copy, I have a printed copy if anyone needs one.
That the one that Shannon sent out today?
Yeah.
Yep.
There's no modifications.
I haven't changed anything unless you would like some.
I'll look again, thank you.
You want to take a second to take a look?
No, as long as David said there's no modifications, I read it. Alright.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. To approve site plan S I T twenty-five dash zero 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 nine Mystic Business Park Two Expansion. Seven hundred Flanders Road with the following conditions. One, any modification to this plan imposed by another federal, state or local agency. Shall require additional review by town staff or the commission, whichever is appropriate. Two, the design engineer shall certify that the stormwater management system and septic system have been installed for the approved plan. And provide an as-built prior to the certificate of site plan compliance. Three, technical items as raised by staff. Shall be addressed. Findings, the commission finds that the postponement of frontage sidewalks along Noank Leger Road. Meets the intent of section eight dot three dash five dot A of the zoning regulations. And is acceptable for the following reasons. One, proposed expansion of the business park will not include access on Noank Leger Road except for emergency fire department access. Two, approval of this request will not cause negative health, safety or welfare. Of existing or anticipated pedestrian traffic along this frontage. Three, the applicant will sign a sidewalk agreement stipulating a future. Frontage sidewalk connection be installed as part of any future development of the parcel and or pedestrian activity. Changes in conditions of the area. Such an agreement shall be binding, transferable to any future property owner. And filed in the Town of Groton Land Records. The commission finds that there will be no significant pedestrian movement between buildings and within the development. Or between the site and those adjacent to it. Installation of internal sidewalks do not meet any of the circumstances listed in section eight dot three dash four dot A. And therefore not required. The commission finds that the proposed landscaped area and planters along the fringe of the billion. Buildings meets the intent of section eight dot one dash four dot A of the zoning regulations. And fall under design standard eight dot one dash four dot A dot two dot B. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, any questions or comments? Okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed or abstained? Okay, carries unanimously, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
But Tim, we also start sometimes and. And we finish and say thank you for your continued investment in the town of Groton.
Yeah.
We're very grateful, a very good job that you guys provided here and. Well, be successful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, yeah.
Our community relations.
I'm tuning in, I'm working on it, they haven't officially given me that, but.
Yeah.
Very grateful for investment.
Alright, great. Let's see, old business? Nothing old? Or new business applications? Referral?
Right, the only referral you have tonight is the Gosco sewer pump station easement. Um, that was described in your package.
Right.
That pump station is on Navy land.
Yeah.
Um, and and apparently it was built in the seventies and apparently an easement was never obtained. So, so this is the Navy cleaning up, basically, some something that had been missed. Um, so the eight twenty-four uh, referral is for you to determine whether or not this is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. Um, I suggest that it is given relations with the Navy and this pump station serves the Navy base. Yep, exactly.
Great. Um, do you want us to make a motion on this?
Um, of course, if I find it consistent, that would be great.
Okay, great, and first, are there any other questions, anybody has a staff? Okay, right. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that the, uh.
The easement, the easement is consistent with the.
It's consistent with.
P O C.
The P O C, there you go.
Great.
Second.
Second, okay, you know, the comments, okay, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public is abstaining. Hey, unanimous.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh, yeah, yep. Okay, commission reports, um. Yeah, I have a few things to report. Um, for those of you that I haven't thought through about this, um, there are. There has seemingly um, been kind of a nice um, speed up in movement towards getting better rail service. Um, and they were looking actually between Boston and New York. Um, there was, or there is a meeting tomorrow in Westerly at the train station. Um, it's already completely full, which is a good sign too, so many signups for it. So the overflow, which is me, um, and others, is going to Thursday and there'll be a Zoom meeting. And I think it should be quite interesting, um. Apparently, uh, well, they have a nice presentation, everything they're talking about, the only problem with their presentation I saw. Is um, there was no station between New London and Mystic, right? And we certainly want a placeholder, even to say to be whatever, um. We would like to put Groton in there as soon as possible.
It's the only thing.
No, it's a. When you read about everything it does, you get people to Providence Airport, Love Island, Providence and other things and connect up to Boston. And down in New York, and those of us who do take the train quite a bit know how wonderful it'd be to have better rail service, especially stopping in Groton.
Is this just preaching to the choir? No, I think everyone in Groton thinks what a great idea, everyone in Westerly thinks it's a great idea. We're we're not the problem.
No, I would agree with you, except that's not why I heard from the people who were pushing for this years ago. It was like everybody Rhode Island was in love with it, it was hard to get enthusiasm from Groton. But now it seems a lot more people are becoming aware, and it was quite a nice map there.
Yeah.
You know, very nicely lays it out. So I'm happy to hear you say that, Hal, because I I do think people are gonna, many more are gonna be speaking. Listening and hopefully supporting this uh, project. Talk about the P O C D, that will probably tie into a future. To be a finished up P O C D that we're working on, so. Um. So if you want to, let me know, or else maybe staff could. So if you want to let me know, or else maybe staff could send out the link or whatever to the Westerly generated Zoom meeting Thursday night. Let's see. Uh, one request. I know you've all been putting so much time in on the P O C D, all the meetings and everything, and I think all of us have learned a lot, enjoyed a lot and everything like that. But make sure your comments on chapters one to six, you know, you ought to get those to staff sooner rather than later, or anything else you want to comment on, or say something's missing, or or gee, boy, you still haven't done this. I think it'd be a great time trying to get all these in before our next meeting on the P O C D. Because we're, we are starting to look at all the comments, public comments as a whole. And so hopefully make sure we have our commission ones, too. I think that makes a lot of sense. Really appreciate that. That's all I had. Was any commissioner had something?
Because that is a report, so it maybe needs to be agenda item to tell meetings that Soapy Noble. What we want. That we thought we did okay on. Of the running now. And after sunset, it's a light show in the north side. And it's not a mild one.
Really?
It's a hectic, wild. The intent of it is supposed to be able to display the process to the roads, which is fine. We're doing it. The other car wash is going to be on the other side of the road. There's something, it's railroad tracks. It's just fine. We'll do exactly that, just fine. This one. It aims almost back, back into the neighborhood. And it's, is unscreened. It's a wall glass and it's unscreened. So whatever, whatever we were planning on for screening just didn't cut it.
So we've had some, at the very beginning, when it opened up, we had some complaints about the lights inside. And due to that, I have a really good contact person at Soapy Noble who's manages this particular site. And so we will get them turned off.
Great.
It just stays off, I suppose. That's okay. My thought is maybe with some, need some, some lighting in there. But it just can't fit this, this light show.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So we discussed that, right? I, I thought, whatever, and I could be wrong. I'm not gonna, I didn't go back, Hal. But I thought they said they did turn that light off. Right? And that's why there was an additional modifications for them to do more of a barrier. That's what I remember.
Well, that's a good solution.
We have a lot of.
Turn them on.
Yeah, a lot of car washes, of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, most of them are kind of in the right place. As it turns out, they also have these intensely obnoxious lights over the vacuums. And they're not a problem. They're actually blocked by the building very high.
Okay. But yep, I have a good contact there.
Okay, thanks a lot.
I just had a question. Uh, there's some, Bonnie Circle. What's going on? Floyd Kravitz's property. It's not, it's not his anymore. But I mean, that's whose it was. You know who I mean.
I do, I do, I do. I do. So the new owner has basically taken out the brush and is, will, is preparing an application. He hasn't quite decided what he's going to do there, but it will be some sort of housing.
Okay.
But we expect an application.
But you're, I mean, I'm, it's, I mean, everyone's got to be aware of it. It's just kind of surprised me because is that going to be a subdivision? Is that?
Again, we're not sure. It's exploring subdivisions. He's exploring cottage communities. I, I'm not sure what we're gonna end up with.
Great.
Well, it was, we denied, there was a subdivision there, then denied.
Oh, there was, there was one that was.
Probably fifteen years ago.
There were, there were three applications for that. One was approved and appealed and, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Sound barrier, you know, wooden sound fence.
Yep.
Yep.
Anyway, okay. So long as everybody's aware of it.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. Okay.
Yeah, so I have something first, then I have the land use academy, but just wanted to let you know that as you, as you all know, there's a Fiskel versus Towne of Groton discrimination suit because of my P C C position. And this appears the state of Connecticut has filed for what we call early legal intervention. So they want to come into this discussion. The mediation, as I said in the last time, failed. And since that and subsequent in November, the town council provided some changes in their policy as far as the appointment policy is concerned. And in that appointment policy, they moved from qualified, which I think would describe planning and zoning commission in Groton to words such as fit and reasonable and suitable. And my legal team is now refiling a discovery with the state of Connecticut Human Rights, basically saying that's punitive against myself as well as not legal terms for appointments. So essentially, it's an ongoing issue. And that's where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for the opportunity. And did you want to talk about the land use?
Yeah, so.
So a brief report?
Yeah, very brief report is that I attended the Land Use Academy for the advanced class on November fifteenth. It's in-house training in Haddon. And it was terrific. It was about a six hour total session. First of all, their breakfast and lunch are delicious as an aside, but it's four credit hours. And why it was so important, I'm not sure who, who has already attended, Jim, I don't know if you have, but they were very good. And so we had Sage and Howren talking. And Sage and Howren typically, they represent towns. And that is their side of the market. And so what they talked about, though, was bias predisposition and conflicts. So logically, you could kind of sink this through, but they were very precise, particularly on predisposition. That in our particular case, as commissioners, predisposition is typically where it's challenged if they feel that commissioners has come in with an opinion prior to a particular application. And that training was very positive. And then we went into fair and affordable housing policies. And this becomes more critical, I think, in Groton, as the present mayor outlined some of her vision. And part of that was both homelessness and affordable housing. So while I was disappointed on Pleasant Valley, and I feel that it wasn't explained well enough, because we all know that, yeah, it's a very indistinct process with US federal government, has been for a very long time. I felt that if, when you go to the Land Use Academy, and as we approach this, and I've said this before, the people solving affordable housing are a lot of the people in this room. We need to explore similar to like West, West Hartford did, who had a very similar problem. And they now are continuing to build affordable housing units. And within the last couple of years, they built one hundred and sixty-seven of those that are not always attached to a larger project. But as I was speaking over with, with Deb prior to this, Goman in York, who is a, a land use consulting outfit, I'll say. They also provided thirty slides and quantitative slides on how to make affordable housing work. And it was brilliant, because it really showed that don't wait just for, you know, a TIF type of basis. That's not, that's only one route to go. So to quote that we're only, the, the, the federal department is indistinct, it's not entirely robust. We need to look further as far as affordable housing is concerned, and I think we can do it. And then the third thing is just running a meeting and a meeting decision. So it was a tremendous four hours of training. So thank you to Towne of Groton. I'm very grateful that you've also been able to pave that for me. So.
Can we get copies of those slides?
So should I submit those, Deb?
Yeah, and we'll get it out. That would be great. Thank you, Kevin. Yep.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Jim, do you have anything?
Questions?
Okay. Now, staff? Any report? Oh, wait, before we do that, right, we gotta do Public Act. Almost out over here.
Right, we're doing that under report of staff, but then we have a couple of other things, too.
Good. But thanks for putting that in. I appreciate it. And wow, it sounds, yeah, a lot of work to be done.
That's exactly right. So this is really just a really brief overview of what this bill is, because we are still digesting it, okay? So Public Act twenty-one, twenty-five one has been signed by the governor, all right? So it is, it is in law. And again, we're still reviewing the document, but we anticipate guidance from the Connecticut chapter of the American Planning Association, input from the Council of Governments and, and the Connecticut Bar Association. And we expect to be hearing from them in January, February. So we'll have a bit more information about what your responsibilities are. Generally, this, this bill includes a whole lot of items that, that don't concern you. That there's the first time home buyer savings program, there's rental assistance, there's some new rules about fair rent commissions, there's some sections that impact eight thirty G communities, which we are not, because we have more than ten percent afforded affordable housing. Some housing authority reporting requirements. And then, you know, some stuff about elevator inspections and mobile home hydrant reporting and loan. Anyway, a bunch, there's a bunch of stuff in here that really doesn't concern you. But the town will be responsible for a couple of zoning text amendments and to produce a housing growth plan. Okay? So the text amendments, they're going to include the prohibition of minimum parking requirements for multi-unit developments of sixteen units or less. There are some exceptions to that. Allowing what they call missing, no, what they call middle housing, right? Which is two to eight, two to nine units, okay? You allowing that and mixed use development in commercial and mixed use zones without special permits. And I will tell you that most of that is already allowed here in Groton in those types of zones. Duplexes aren't allowed in the MTC downtown, so we'll have to tweak that. Um, let's see. There's also a change to how the public can protest zoning maps and text amendments. Right now, the requirement to protest, you know, a proposal is to have signatures from twenty percent of the property owners within five hundred feet of the proposed map amendment. That would push the commission to adopt that map amendment by a two-thirds vote. Okay, rather, so four rather than three. So they're upping that requirement to fifty percent of the property owners have to sign on in order to require basically a super majority to approve it. The housing growth plan, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. So first of all, it revises the requirements of eight thirty J, which is the section that requires an affordable housing plan. So as Kevin has noted, you know, we did adopt one in twenty twenty-two. They're supposed to be revised every five years. So we were, for this bill, looking to start working on it before twenty twenty-seven. So the housing growth plan can either be developed by the town on its own or by the Council of Governments. I think what, what this Council of Governments will do is develop a plan that's similar to our hazard mitigation plan. So they do a hazard mitigation plan for the entire region, right? And then have individual chapters for each town. The state is giving the COG money to do this, and I expect that the town will go ahead and, and work with the Council of Governments rather than going out on our own and doing it individually. Regardless of who develops this plan, the COG is going to be responsible to assess housing needs and assign recommended affordable housing goals for each town. So that won't be done for another year, year and a half. This bill also has a number of incentives in there. So the town can adopt regulations to promote transit oriented development. It's likely the MTC probably fulfills that right now, maybe some tweaks. And that will open up grant opportunities like increased school construction reimbursement and sewer loans. Also note, there's some changes to the statute that allows fee in lieu of parking. Something we have not taken advantage of. Mostly because you have to have a plan for a parking lot or garage as you collect the money and you take that money to build it. Again, this is brief. I will, we will have more information for you after the first of the year.
Right.
Yeah. And as learning opportunities come up, we will forward that to you.
Yeah, oh, thanks. I really appreciate all your work on the housing. It's a great intro, so.
Yeah, so thank you, Deb. So when I was at Land Use Academy, they also, I recommended to them that, you know, they do a primer as far as this is concerned. And, you know, eighty people in there, everyone was very much in it because there was a lot of concern more than anything else. And so what you provided tonight, I understand it was just, it's a glimpse for the moment, right? But if you look at what we're doing in our P O C D and some of the quantitative analysis and data that we have, I have to believe we're in good shape here, right? As far as the ability to make decisions, we need to make decisions. We're going to be asked to make decisions, but we have the data that when I joined four years ago, we didn't have, right? And I think that's going to put us in an innovative position that we do what we want as far as a fair share is concerned. So that's my feeling.
Great.
Yeah, thanks. The other couple of things that we have tonight. So the next steering committee for the P O C D is next Thursday. We're gonna try to get the agenda packet out to you by Friday. And I want to let you know that the extension of the Whittle special permit was appealed.
Oh, you're right.
Yep.
All right. So next Thursday, that's great.
What?
What's Thursday?
The Whittle extension that was in October, the extension of their special permit for the. It was appealed.
To who?
To Superior Court. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if everybody could get any comments on the P O C D and hopefully this week would be ideal.
Sure. I mean, we will, at that meeting on the eighteenth, we'll be looking, I hope, at the future land use map. We expect it sometime this week. And we'll start talking about comments that you have gotten from the public.
Yep, that's great. And we have all those comments, I guess.
We will send them, we'll put them in the agenda packet. You do have them, but you know, they, as they came in, we gave them to you.
Right, really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's good to know. So we weren't really missing anything.
Right.
Because some of the comments were quite, very good and lengthy.
Right, right. So just keep in mind, I mean, we're going to give you the, it might be eight or nine comments, right, that we've gotten. But Horsley Witten has tracked all the survey information and all of the information we've gotten from focus groups. So it's, it's more than just, you know, these seven or eight comments. It's what we've been hearing through the whole process.
Right, good. Appreciate that. So. So anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Then, let's see, application update?
Do you have any questions on it?
Nope, nope. Anything else, ASP report we have?
Quick question about three, three oh five Mist River Road.
Yep.
And.
It's a coastal site plan application, right?
Yeah, that is a demolition to that property?
That's, that's the proposal.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and that requires, does that require commission action or just the staff?
Coastal site plan, it will be for you all.
Because it's a thousand feet from the water.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
That's it? Okay, great.
And this is the change to it. I don't know if you were here, this is, so this is, it's been a change. So now there's this whole referral to the state before. So it takes, we're, they're the very first project, coastal site plan project that we are taking on that needs a referral to the state. So they need thirty-five days to respond. So that one probably won't, we sent it out right when it came in. So most likely, we're probably not good that, that probably won't come in front of the commission till like late January-ish at the earliest.
So, so what, what does the state look for in the response?
We're not sure yet.
Yep, we don't know.
We really don't know. So this is, this is a brand new thing and we have yet to hear even.
I mean, I mean, generally, they are looking to impact on coastal resource from this project.
So the, I guess the question I have is that, given the number of properties, even within the Town of Groton, but you'd think the entire state of Connecticut that are within a thousand feet of waterways.
This adds, yeah, this adds a lot.
With the volume of that.
Yeah, this adds, this adds a lot, yeah.
This is kind of our test case, right?
Yes, this is the first test case. This is the first, you know, the single, first single unit dwelling that is now required to be referred up to the state. So, and that's, and you, you had already, I think the last time we talked, we were talking about some reg changes, that's going to be a part of the reg changes that we have to.
Attack that onto Mouse Island.
Yep. Yep. So, but yeah, this is the first one. So we don't know what to expect.
Aren't you the expert, kind of?
Well, I will. Yeah, well.
No, nothing. I'm not saying, I'm just saying I have to be an expert here, and I know you've had a lot of.
Yeah, I mean, this one's actually outside the flood zone, so it's moved back, but, but this is the.
The walk by the property.
Yeah.
It's way set back.
Way set back.
So it's probably the, the driveway's got to be two hundred feet long.
Oh, yeah.
Easily.
Yeah, easily.
And so it's, it's way set back from the road. And I can't imagine it's in the flood plain. So kind of wondering why it's.
I have one question, too. Does it affect when we have to take an action? So if the state is not as expeditious as we'd like, is, is there a tie between that when we have to?
We might be working on with extensions. And that, and that's kind of what we're telling the client to, the applicants that come in there. So we're really not sure how quickly we're going to get a response back. They're, they're, they're saying that they need thirty-five days and.
But it also says the commission cannot take action until you receive their invoice.
Right, exactly. So it's, we might be working with, there might be a bunch of extensions just. Right, exactly. So it's, we might be working with, there might be a bunch of extensions just to get us to the next meeting and whatnot, so. But it's also on us to make sure that as soon as we get it in and it gets sent out as a referral to them, so.
Yeah, good, well.
So we'll find out.
Yeah. Looking forward to that, something new?
Yeah.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks everyone for your time and work.